Good evening, we will now call it to order the Chesterfield Township Planning Commission Meeting on one three two thousand and twenty-three. Roll call, I will call the roll. Mr. Miller is here, Mr. LaBelle.
Here.
Mr. Domingue.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Renaud.
Here.
Mr. Jaworski.
Here.
Mr. Klonowski.
Here.
Mr. Carr.
Here.
Mr. Brokhardt.
Here.
All here, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
What I believe is the flag of the United States of America and which is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, can everybody please silence their telephones? Approval of the agenda, I will make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. We have a motion by Mr. Miller, supported by Mr. Domingue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Public hearings, there is none, reviews, our Secretary Rick will do the ones we can do in a timely manner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item A is rezoning three sixty-two, requesting to rezone the property at the northeast corner of Grashit Avenue and Hickey Road from C-one, local commercial to C-three, general commercial, located at the parcel ID of one five dash zero nine dash zero nine dash one five two dash zero zero two. The public hearing was closed and tabled on twelve six of twenty-two. At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning of said property from C-one to C-three. And here's some points of, uh, the points of why I'm making this motion. The property is, uh, is currently not, it is, it is consistent with our net, or, um, with our master plan, as our master plan states, it's a C-one. The, how would it, would it impact the other zoning ordinances in the area, um, or zoning areas in the area? The other side of Hickey Road is currently a C-three zoning, across the street is a M-two manufacturing industrial area, behind it is residential. In my opinion, I would make a recommendation to the board to approve, based upon, I don't think that it would impact any of the, it wouldn't impact our master plan.
They have a motion by Mr. Leonard, supported by Mr. Renaud. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Item B is Title Wave Auto Spa, twenty twenty-two dash eleven. It's a special land use, M-two, it's, it's nine point five nine acres, on the west side of Grashit, north of Twenty-three Mile Road. The parcel ID is one five dash zero nine dash one seven dash three twenty-six dash zero zero seven. Mr. Kirk is, uh, is in the audience this evening. I had a conversation when, prior to our meeting, and brought up some of our concerns, and he would be more than glad to, uh, address them for us, Mr. Carr.
Mr. Kirk?
Bob Kirk, nineteen five hundred Hall Road, Clinton Township, Michigan, on behalf of petitioner. I did speak with Mr. LaBelle regarding the circulation, and I know Mr. Carr brought it up last time, I believe the issue is with regard to the, I guess, one-way of entry and exit. Is that correct?
There's mul-, uh, well, from my perspective, there's multiple issues. There's the issue with your, on the west side, I guess you'd say the north entry, the fact that, um, your expectation is people would be exiting and then making a left and then driving on the left side of the road while cars are queuing on the right side of the road, which is opposite to, again, traffic patterns in the United States. We don't drive on the left side, so I believe that's gonna cause issues and confusions. I also think people will probably double stack there, which is gonna cause further issues, and then the exit that's farther to the south, you have a dumpster there and you're expecting somebody to make a left while people are coming up on the right and make a hundred and eighty-degree turn and then get back to the right side of the road. And from my perspective, I don't know, uh, I, it goes against everything that, I mean, I was taught, uh, from a, you know, architectural perspective on how to do site layouts, so, you know, you try to create situations that don't cause confusion to drivers, not all drivers are, you know, great, right? You try to make traffic patterns as logical and easy as possible, and doing things that go against, you know, what we're, you know, taught as young drivers, I think you're creating possible issues where there can be conflicts, which is not anything anyone will want to do, is create safety issues. So, yeah, those are my two biggest concerns, are those two.
And I spoke with our engineer who was here last time, I think one option would be to the entryway to the west, would just, we could maybe turn it into a one-way entryway, and then shift that little one over in front of the dumpster, over, but make it bigger, and that would be the exit out, so there'd be no conflict on the in and out.
I'm trying to... All right, repeat yourself.
See where the entryway is on the left? That's an in and out, correct?
Well, the, the left is, uh, well, they're both one ways. Yeah. Well, I don't think it's shot, then. Yeah, okay, so, yeah, both those exits are, are one ways where you have to make a left-hand turn, so what were you saying, I'm sorry?
So, the exit to the left, extra entry exit there where the stacking starts?
Yeah.
Right there, turn that and do a, a one-way in only? And then establishing a new exit way between, in that farther to the east between the aisle way as a, as the exit way, a one-way out? So you wouldn't have that conflict where it says one, one-way there at the end of that last vacuum stack?
Yeah, for me, that, that works better, any, you know, from that perspective, and that was the similar layout that you had in your sound study, and that's what I pointed out three weeks ago, was go look at your sound study, 'cause that had, that's how that was set up, so, I mean, from my perspective, that is better. Yeah, I guess the only question is that, well, dumpster location there, if it stays, it wouldn't block the view, because people would only be turning left out of there to go to Grashit, because at that point, they've already gone to the car wash, so it'd be a left turn only, it wouldn't be right turn. And they would have to put a sign that says "left turn only" kind of thing, unless somebody wants to pay twice for a car wash, which I'm sure they'll be good with that, but...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, as discussed, um, we've seen this, this proposal previously, um, and since it was last discussed by the Planning Commission, the applicant has submitted a lighting plan that shows compliance with the ordinance standards, and the applicant has received approval from the ZBA to use the shared drive to the back part of the parcel. What remains for the Planning Commission tonight is to discuss special land use approval, approval of the canopy placement, um, discussion on whether the applicant has provided acceptable levels of nuisance mitigation, in particular for noise, odor, um, and the types of equipment and machinery on site, and then, um, the typical approval of building frontage materials and the landscaping plan. The last thing that's, um, a little bit more nuanced, I guess, is the bollards, so the applicant is proposing bollards for the trash enclosure and for ADA accessible parking. The bollards in the parking area meet the height requirements, but the bollards in other areas are five feet tall, which is a foot taller than what's allowed, um, and the bollards are also proposed to be painted traffic yellow, and the requirement is that they be finished in a natural earth-ton color. But other than that, I will leave it to the Planning Commission for discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Domingue? Mr. Brokhardt? Mr. Renaud? Mr. Carr?
I have nothing additional from those corrections. I have nothing additional that's, uh...
I have nothing additional.
Mr. Jaworski?
Nothing additional.
Mr. Klonowski?
Nothing.
Mr. Leonard?
I just have a question on the, uh, the exit there where the dumpster is, was that resolved? I see we have the one-way going in and coming back in between the two structures there to exit, but what happens to that exit? Is that gonna be opened up? I didn't catch if that was resolved. When you leave the place, you're gonna make a left turn, but is that gonna be a wider opening?
Like, the thought is to be, be wider and then move farther over to the east.
Are we gonna see another drawing to see what we end up with?
There would be one more drive, well, a wider drive, and it'll be moved over to the east for an exit.
But I mean another drawing, 'cause we're talking about these changes, are we gonna see it before we vote on this?
That would be what I would recommend.
All right, that was one of the other questions.
Mr. Kirk, could you, uh, could you have the engineer create the drawing as of what changes we are recommending, or recommending, or, um, you know, whatever she feels she would choose to do?
We could do that.
For our, for our use. It's, um, it's a bit much to approve administratively.
Okay.
And that, um, so I would postpone making a, uh, a recommendation for a approval until, until we have that information. How much time do you think you need?
I can get it done real quick for the next meeting, I believe.
Okay, I'll give up to two meetings then?
One meeting's fine.
One meeting's fine?
Yeah. And then the, the other issues on the bollards, we can comply with that, so if there's any other issues, I'd like to know those now, so we don't have to come back with...
Right, it would give you an opportunity to make those changes on the drawings with Ms. Osborne brought up.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to table, I'm sorry, not to table, but to postpone making a decision for up to two meetings, giving the applicant time to, uh, make drawing changes.
We have a motion by this, Mr. LaBelle, supported by Mr. Renaud. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Item C is Forest View Estates, twenty twenty-two dash zero six. It's a site plan preliminary review for a condominium, R-one-B, it's thirty-one point two acres, the north side of Twenty-four Mile Road, west of Baker Road, the parcel ID is one five dash zero nine dash one one dash three zero zero dash zero zero two. The applicant is here this evening, and Ms. Osborne has a, um, a synopsis of what Giffords Webster has discovered.
Ms. Osborne?
Thank you. Uh, so the, uh, proposal in front of you now is for a, um, single-family site condominium, featuring fifty-four single-family home site condominiums. And, uh, tonight, the commission should review the overall project layout and lot configurations, as well as the acceptability of the proposed screening from Twenty-four Mile Road along the units there. There's some additional information that will come during the final, uh, final plans, and that's included in your packet listed at the top of page two of my review letter. Really, though, everything is in compliance with, um, the ordinance for preliminary review, and again, the only thing, um, that should be discussed by the Planning Commission tonight is the design and number of trees screening the dwelling units from Twenty-five Mile Road, um, to determine if that's, uh, excuse me, Twenty-four Mile Road, to, um, determine if that is sufficient. Thank you.
Planning Commission, do you have any questions? Mr. Domingue? Mr. Brokhardt? Mr. Renaud? Mike?
Do we see the applicants here?
Yes.
Yeah, there is. So, just a couple of quick questions, and this is, might even say it's more from a curiosity standpoint, but I was just looking at the size of the homes. With the, with where the market's at right now, are you gonna be able to, I guess, build those and sell those without being impacted by, and I know costs there are starting to come down and whatnot, but I know they seem, they just seem to be a little bit on the larger size, is that still gonna be an issue selling those? Assuming the price points are gonna be in the, I'm assuming, the four-hundred-thousand-dollar range or so, give or take?
Sure. I mean, I, we anticipate having a relatively broad range of, of options, to be honest with you. Whether we would have to, you know, bring that scale down within the range versus being higher up, very possible, and I wish I had the crystal ball for what's gonna happen, you know, after twenty twenty-three. Hopefully, we see a little bit of rebound in, in sales demand with, uh, with interest rates improving, but, um, I think our, our range that we have will allow us latitude to move.
Okay.
Within it, without, I mean, honestly, you can't afford to build a house that's too small, anyway, so...
Right, no, exactly.
That's the truth of where things are at now.
All right, very good, that's all I had, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Carr?
My only question was, uh, I was comfortable with the layout, I thought it was, you know, pretty well done. Um, my only question was regarding the screening at Twenty-four Mile, 'cause I, I actually lived for twelve years in Heatherwoods, which is right next door.
Sure.
And there, you know, they, uh, your, your screening trees along, um, Twenty-four Mile Road there, are you, uh, in that twenty-foot buffer, are you gonna at least do some type of, uh, like, berm, and then put the stuff, the, the trees and stuff on top just to create a, a little bit buffer, or are you planning on just making that, 'cause there's no topo on these, but I was wondering that twenty-footer, you know, that twenty-foot landscape, but are you, you gonna kind of berm that up a little bit, just to create, I guess, some additional height to screen some of those yards?
Sure. I, the honest truth is, I, I don't know right now, 'cause we haven't done a grading plan. You know, typically, I, I like the idea of having a small berm, eh, along the, the landscape buffer, I think it's, it, it looks good, it's a good aesthetic.
So do I.
Um, what, what I don't know is how the site's gonna balance yet, right? So, until we do the grading plan, we don't know if we're gonna be light on dirt and bringing dirt in, or if we're gonna be heavy and trying to haul dirt out already, so, without that information's tough for me to tell you for sure either way. I can say that would be my inclination, would be to use up some of the topsoil, but truly without the grading plan available, I wouldn't want to commit to either way.
Yeah, just because the, the, uh, the berm along major roadways like that is, you know, aesthetically, it's, it's nicer, and then, but also does create a little bit more height separation for the backyards behind it, so, that'd be my only comment and recommendation is that, but that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Jaworski?
Are these all brick, or just a brick facade?
Their ranches would be all brick, basically. Well, I, I take that back, they would have brick on all four sides, generally speaking.
Okay.
The, the colonials would be optional to have brick first floor, um, depends on the style of the home that's chosen for the front, and then with the ability to do, one of the, the styles that's pretty in demand right now is like a craftsman-style looking house, which would tend to have stone or brick maybe up to the knee, and not necessarily first floor, so, that truly would depend on the style of house chosen.
That's all I have, thank you.
You good? Yes. Mr. Klonowski?
Yeah, I have a question, I, I don't know if the applicant can answer, or perhaps planning. What's the difference between a regulated and an unregulated wetland?
I mean, I could give you my understanding as, as a non-professional in that field, just based on the consultants we use, but I would defer to the planning consultant if, if she would like to answer it, too.
Jonathan, you wanna answer that? Ms. Bum, you wanna answer that? Do you wanna answer that?
It's my understanding that the regulations apply to wetlands of a certain size, and if they're below that size, then they're not necessarily regulated, but they should be identified, because that does have a, an impact on development.
And, for the record, they are on the plan, you know, they are recognized on the plan.
Yes.
That's why I see it, it said "unregulated," I just wondered, what's the determining factor? Is, is, is size then it would be, the size of the area?
Correct.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mr. Leonard?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. LaBelle?
So, um, this is just a, I'm sorry, this is a site plan preliminary review, will they have an opportunity to come back in front of us with a final drawing before we, uh, make a, a decision? Because we, we, we do have an, an issue, as Mr. Carr brought up, not an issue, a concern about, um, the landscape buffers. Without having anything on the drawings, we don't know what we're approving at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is preliminary site condominium, so they, they would be looking for a decision on this phase of the plan. Uh, the way this would work is, once they receive preliminary site condominium, they'd then proceed to engineering review. Uh, once the engineering is approved, then they would submit for final site condominium, and at that point, at final site condominium, that's when all the, you know, generally looking at the lots and layout's gonna be the same, um, but at that time is when you could, it's when you review the master deed and condo docs, um, typically, that's when you review the tree removal plan and a final landscaping plan, 'cause some of that stuff can shift, shift around a little bit, depending on engineering and, and where, you know, infrastructure needs to go, so, but at this point, it would be, uh, an approval is required at preliminary for them to move on to engineering.
Okay, thank you.
So, from what I heard, they are going to be coming back in front of us again?
Correct.
That's, was my question. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan preliminary review for the condominium complex, R-one-B, it's thirty-one acres, the address is thirty-three two sixty-five Twenty-four Mile Road.
We have a motion by Mr. LaBelle, supported by Mr. Renaud. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Approve of the minutes of prior meetings, I'll make a motion to approve November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, the special meeting, and December sixth, twenty twenty-two. Support, we have a motion by Mr. Miller, supported by Mr. Renaud. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communications, there is none, old business, none new business. Non-planters report? Ms. Osborne?
Thank you, welcome back, everybody, Happy New Year.
Thank you.
We, uh, included in your packet this, uh, meeting, a memo about ordinance audit action items, um, and priorities for twenty twenty-three, so I've put it up here on the screen, I'll try to make it a little bigger. Um, so Jonathan, we know for sure we'll have cannabis to work on this year, but in addition to that, we also have, um, and we have other items that come up regularly in what Jonathan sees in the office, as well as, um, kind of ideals that, uh, we think are best practices, and then, um, some other things that were identified previously with Matt and Rod that, um, were of interest in updating for your zoning ordinance. So you'll see in the top right are the first and second priority items, um, based on what Jonathan and I have identified, um, and if you feel really strongly, you can let one of us know, um, if something else should be moved up, but we know we need to update the tree preservation requirements, just make them less cumbersome for applicants, um, and we are, Jonathan's been working on a tree fund, um, getting that set up, so that's in the works. Our second priority item here is updating the PUD standards with best practices, so they better align with the master plan goals. Both of those things are not only high priority, but will take a lot of time and effort, so we'll get those in as we can and as we think we'll have time, um, with the cadence and other things that we have coming forward. On the left side, we have, um, not, we have high priority items, but they'll require less effort, so we might be able to sneak these in, um, even if we have lots of reviews or, um, other things to do here at the meeting. So the third priority item is introducing regulations for rezoning review processes, unlisted use determination, and plan amendments in Article Six. And then the fourth priority are, is to create standards to limit access points and encourage shared driveways and service and access drives. So those four things, um, in particular, are high priority for us, um, you can see the other things that Jonathan has requested, again, based on his, uh, his work in the office on a day-to-day basis, um, and then everything else is kind of pulled over from previous, um, audits of the, the zoning ordinance. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention, we'll bring it back, uh, from time to time, as we're, you're looking for things to, to fill your Tuesday evenings, um, but I did wanna just put it out there for now, and, um, as I mentioned, we're gonna, uh, be working on cannabis a lot this year, so I'm gonna turn it over to Jill, um, and she's gonna, uh, lead you through the memo on cannabis.
Thank you.
Jill?
Thank you, Happy New Year, everybody. So we do have just a short overview memo for you in your packets. As you recall from our meeting last month with the Township Board, we went through, uh, the, the timeline and how, um, the township got to be, um, in the position of looking at ordinance language relating to cannabis facilities. And so with, um, with the allowance of that per the ballot, uh, from November, um, the Planning Commission is tasked with creating some zoning standards. So as we talked about in, uh, December, there are two kinds of ordinances that we will be, that the Township Board will be considering for adoption, and those would be the licensing ordinance, uh, which is general code language, um, that gives the, uh, authority to allow those facilities in the township, and then the zoning ordinance, so how, where, um, and when and why we allow, um, uses to operate in the township. So, this memo is just intended to provide, um, just a short overview, again, refresher on the types of licenses that the state of Michigan has allowed, um, and the, and sort of a definition of what those are, and then looking at some of the impacts and considerations. So, this isn't intended to be an ordinance or a draft ordinance, really what we were giving you are some of the to, the topics, um, that we will be looking for your input on. So, things like safety, what are the safety concerns, um, because then we can write the ordinance language based on what the concerns are of the planning commissioners. That may also have impacts on where Planning Commission recommends these facilities to be located. Other issues might be traffic and parking, energy and water consumption, nuisances, we typically think of odor as being one of the primary nuisances, but are there other concerns that the planning commissioners have? When we think about location, um, thinking about the types of, of businesses that these are, and what they might be more similar to, um, also things to be thinking about, um, if we have businesses in certain locations, what happens when a business closes? What are the impacts, um, that the business might have, both being occupied or being unoccupied, in the location that it's at? Trash, hazardous materials, hours of operation, parking and circulation, just the same kinds of things that you would have considerations for on any other use that would come before you, that was requested... that would come before you, that was requesting to be permitted here in the township. So really, nothing unusual in that. And thinking then, as we move on from some of those things, also including like lighting, building design, and other, whether the uses would be permitted or special land uses. And then just finally, wrapping up with a draft outline, where we would start with the definitions. We would look at the districts in which they're permitted, and those follow your clear zoning ordinance. Definitions will all go in the definitions section. They'll be listed in the Chapter Three uses. And then looking at any U standards, and then any general requirements for the facility. Specific standards, we might have specific standards for retailers, for example, so that they are contributing in a positive way to nearby businesses based on the frequency of people coming and going, the consumers that are coming in there. And then a review process, if there's any additional considerations that the planning commission would like to see for these types of facilities. So that's a general overview. We really were hoping that, that perhaps you've had time to give it some thought. I know some of you have been out exploring and visiting, doing site visits, and getting a feel for how other existing businesses maybe blend, or if you've seen any that seem out of context to you, or you've seen things that you question, do we have to have this, for example, we might think about for, with respect to retailers, we think about security measures, whether we have bars in the windows that are visible, or whether we don't want to see bars in the windows because other retailers that are nearby might not have bars in the windows. What kind of impression do we want to create from these businesses? Should they have open windows where you can see in and out, like we would recommend with other types of retailers? Or we want to not be able to see things? What does that do, though, from a safety perspective? Do we want to be able to see in or out? Particularly, I think, with respect to retail businesses. That's more of a consideration than some of our more industrial-type uses, like our growers or our processors or our testing facilities. So those are just some things that we've been hoping, you've been giving some thought to, and then I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair, to direct that conversation. Oh, and I should just say, and our idea is that we would come back in a couple of weeks, two weeks, did we say? With a, with a very general draft ordinance for you to respond to. Because I know it's hard, I'm not asking you to come up with a language. Right now, we just want to hear what your concerns are, so that we can write some language and then have you give your feedback to us.
I am set for the moment. Thank you.
Not at this time.
Do you have any other languages or language that you used for other communities that are similar to Chesterfield that you can share?
We will. Yeah, we will do that. I'd like to, to have you all articulate some of the things that you would be concerned about, though, because some, there might be some ordinances that are, that don't provide a lot of guidance, and then there's other ordinances that provide a lot of specific requirements. And we can share them both, but to help maybe focus in on the ones that would be the most meaningful for you, that's what we were hoping that we would get from you. So, and I don't need you to say whether you think it should be less, there should be less standards or more standards, but what are the things that you'd be concerned about? Are you concerned about the appearance? Are you concerned about traffic, parking, security, trash? Those are some kind of general things, but are there specific things that you saw, like, hey, when I was in Warren, I noticed that there were a line of cars up and down the side streets. How do we, well, you can look at their ordinance and find out what they require and how that ended up happening.
So should we come up with a list of communities that we would like to see? Because I would agree, there's certain communities that it's kind of like the Wild, Wild West. They'll take anything and anyone into their community just to get the license fee.
Right.
Then there's other communities that have a very limited number of establishments.
Right. Now, we're not looking at the number of establishments. We are just looking at how they are, you know, what kinds of standards we would hold them to in the community.
Okay.
So if you see places, though, that you, that you look, if you drive by and you say, gee, that's a nice-looking building, you know, let us know what it is, where you saw it, and what you liked about it. And if you see others that you say, I don't want that in our community because it has bars in the windows. That's kind of my thing. But that may be, you know, that may be something that you don't necessarily have a problem with, but be thinking about that, like, well, what is it I don't like about this? It's garish. It's got all kinds of contrasting colors. We can write ordinance language that, that reflects the design standards, and you do have that in some areas, too, so that it's, they're relevant for the community. You're not creating things that are wildly different from the way that you would treat other uses, but you're going to maybe find the need in some areas to have something with a little bit higher standard. I should follow up, too. If you could send that to Jonathan in the next week or two.
Mr. Klonowski?
Yeah, as far as the windows. Sorry. As far as the windows, I haven't seen any facilities where you can see inside the stores, and I think that's probably a security concern for the store. You know, they just don't want that to be, be visible from outside. The, as I understand it, the state will not allow it in residential districts. Is that correct?
In residential districts?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. What about if there's a mixed use, where you have commercial and residential mix?
That's up to you.
Okay.
That's up to you. If you feel that a retail establishment is similar to another retail establishment, or if you say, you know what, a growing facility isn't like anything else we allow in this district, then no, you wouldn't have to allow that there.
What if there would be a, a, let's say we decided we wanted to put it in the M1 or M2? What if there's a M1 in that special land use district? Would that, when there's houses in there, would that, would you say no to that in that district?
Are you saying that there, there could be a mixed-use development in an industrial district?
Well, there is, I, there is one on Twenty-six Mile Road where there is one M1 in there, one business. And I believe we have that under the special land use for, for mixed use, commercial and residential.
Is that something that's in the master plan?
That Twenty-six Mile Road.
I think that can be, those details we can work out in terms of distance from residential. Likely, you would not, you would have a distance requirement from single-family residential, but we can always modify that if you think it should be lowered for, like, for example, a mixed-use development.
Yeah, parking is an issue, because these facilities have certain days, a few days where they have heavy traffic, especially around holidays and things. So that's kind of going to be a little bit of an issue. Sometimes they don't have enough parking. We don't want them on the roads, obviously. So that's something we're going to have to look at, try to hash out how many spaces we want for retail footage. So that's it for now. Mr. Leonard?
There's a few places that I've seen that have glass. Typically, the, any kind of windows that they have is more like a reception area, where you go in, you have to show them ID, and then you kind of sign in, I guess, in a way. And then they, any of the glass and viewing would be off to the side, where you can pretty much see all the products in there. So I think the location, if it's an industrial area, if they want to have a little more glass, you know, that's up to them, I guess. I think the, how much glass and whether you put bars on it, if it's an industrial and they want to put bars, who's going to see it, you know? So I, I think the location is going to kind of drive some of the, some of these choices. But, you know, there's just, there's a lot to it. I've actually gotten a pretty good education. Go out there, and it's highly regulated, the state's involved, as far as monitoring and everything. So I'd like to go over this and come up with some items that I can forward on to Jonathan over the next week or two. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Lebel?
Well, I have lists of things that I'd like to talk about, but what I'll do is I'll type it up. Do you want it to come through you, Mr. Miller, to Jonathan, or did you already?
You can send it right to Jonathan.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay. The only thing I wanted to know was, are we going to have designated consumption establishments in the township? Where they can just sit there all day and smoke marijuana?
It is one of the license types that was included in the ballot that was approved.
And I know that we went to one place in Utica that, the smell was horrible. I mean, you couldn't get out of your car, and the smell was right there already. There's got to be something done where the smell isn't that bad. And the parking there was atrocious. They have twenty employees there, and they didn't even have twenty spots on their lot. So it's something that we need to make bigger parking lots for employees and all the other stuff. That's the only thing I have. Anybody else? If not, just.
One last thing. Some of what we heard, too, is because there's more and more communities voting these establishments in, it's diluting the amount of traffic that you might see. So they said, moving forward, you might see less facilities that grow because it's going to be so competitive that you might not see as much of that. It's a huge investment. And you might not see as much traffic, the more facilities that are out there for people to visit. So, you know, whatever we kind of come up with now might change in two, three, five years, you know? And it, the other thing is making sure that when they come in, that there, there's a pretty good commitment to sticking around and not selling it. So I don't know if you do something with their permit or license that, you know, you can't transfer a license to another company, so that you don't have these places popping up and down and being bought out. And there's just a lot of things that can happen in the future. And I think part of that might be a good idea for us to at least think about as we put these things in place.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I, now, there are operations which have really good air filter, air filtering, and there, it really reduces the smell a lot. So that's something that needs to be looked into, some type of regulation for, for that. And then I've seen where they have water recirculation within the facility. So they, they have, they basically use the same water over and over, so that's something to look at as well.
Anything else? If not, I'll bring it to audience participation. Anybody that'd like to speak, they have three minutes. Please sign in, state your name for the record.
Gary Gunnernealik, five-two-six-two-four Laurel Oak Lane. From my perspective, as Jim said, I've been to different facilities. I've represented different clients in this line of work. There are some places you can't smell it. They have the greatest air circulation, and you can't smell it in the building or outside. There's a science to it. There's places that are growing. There's seldom anybody there. It's monitored video and by their computers. Some of these places, with reference to the water, they have holding tanks because a lot of it is, there's nutrients and fertilizer in the process. They sell the used water to farmers, and they spread it on their fields. The, with reference to the bars on the windows, I think in our community, you'll see some liquor stores that have bars on their windows. So like, if you go overboard one way or the other, it's not necessarily productive. The retail places, they like to have windows that are there, but you can't see through them as a matter of security and parking bollards to protect their establishment. The, a few years ago, there was litigation here in Chesterfield as to some property on Grashit. Chesterfield asserted that there was a grow operation. I'd been there. I told them it wasn't. It was just a dispensary when the case was over with. I invited the township building officials to come and look at it. They took my invitation up after the case was dismissed, and they acknowledged that it was never a grow operation. So with reference to the retail, I don't think you should necessarily just say it has to be in industrial versus the grow operations because you need a bigger building. But if you go to New Baltimore, Cricklewood and Industrial Drive, there's three retail establishments there. It's basically on a two-lane road. I have some clients there that aren't in the marijuana cannabis business, and now they complain that there's too much traffic in their industrial district for the people coming to buy. There's plenty of parking. The one building was built from scratch. The other ones were converted. So I think you have to keep an open mind with reference to the dispensaries being in a commercial business area versus all in industrial. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Caitlin. I'm, you guys need to know my address. What do you need to know? I've never been here before, sorry. Okay, so I'm from, at five-three-nine-five-four Connor Drive. And just as I was hearing you guys talk about requirements that you were looking for, regulations that you were considering, when I've been to some facilities in, outside of, obviously, Chesterfield, some of the things that I've seen that I would not want to see in Chesterfield would be things like a secured parking lot, where they have those, you know, those gates that close. Do you know what I'm talking about? Does anyone understand what I'm referring to? The ones that like roll back, where there are really high fences. You can see them along Eight Mile a lot. So those are things that I would definitely not want to see as a resident here. I also don't know if there's a consideration of where these locations might be popping up in terms of consideration next to schools. I would want to make sure that even if there are commercial properties available near schools, that I don't know what the ordinance is or what the requirements are for distances away from those kinds of areas, just in terms of safety. As a parent, that's something I would be concerned about. And then, that's really about it. Sorry.
Anybody else? Nobody else? Somebody else wants to speak? If not, I'll bring it back to the individual commissioners. I already passed that, I'm sorry. I already passed that part of the, we're on a different part of the agenda now.
Are you, oh, I'm sorry.
Individual commissioners, Mr. Demeck?
Good, thank you.
Mr. Brokhardt?
Well, so good, thank you.
Mr. Renault?
All set?
Mr. Carr?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Jaworski?
They said there was going to be a folder somewhere that we would, like, park all the information that everyone's gathering. Are we still considering that, or no?
Yeah, I think what we're going to do is we're going to look for a link on the website. I kind of want to stay away from, like, a shared email, because that gets into stuff where we're looking at the Open Meetings Act. So I would like to create a page on the website, just kind of house all the information. You'll get your stuff in the packets as well, so you'll be seeing that as we move forward.
And that would be accessible by the public?
Yeah.
That would be great.
Correct.
They could, great, thank you.
Mr. Klonowski?
Nothing.
Mr. Leonard?
I think I'm all set at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Lebel?
Looking for volunteers for pre-planning. Mr. Leonard?
Who else? I have nothing, so. Opposed? Motion passes, meeting is adjourned.